Everyone is in, Cinda.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Rose Wilkett Central School March 10 Board of Education Meeting. I'm Lucinda Collier, the president, and I call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A motion, please, to approve the agenda. Jason and Izzata. Before we approve the agenda, there is an addition. There are two additions to the agenda. Could I have a motion, please, to approve adding the two additions to the agenda? Linda and John, all in favor of adding the two additions? Motion is carried. And now with the additions, is there any discussion for approving tonight's agenda? All in favor of approving the agenda? Motion carries. We have presentations tonight, and Michael, I'll turn it over to you to introduce those.
Thank you, Mrs. Collier. So we're going to start tonight. I believe Colby Belcom Scott is joining us. Is he here?
Yep, he's here with me. Just came from musical rehearsal.
Right. So this young man is very impressive. So he's obviously gifted when it comes down to his musical talents. He's involved with the music rehearsal right now. He's a member of our chorus. He's been a member of our student body that represented our strategic action plan last year. So I believe he's also the president of our National Honor Society, if memory serves me correctly. So over the last two years, I've had a chance to get to know Colby and interact with him a little bit. He's taken a very rigorous academic schedule and his grades are phenomenal. So it's a pleasure to have Colby with us tonight. They know he's got to run back the rehearsal. So I'm going to turn it over to him and let him get started so that he can get in quickly and get back so that Mrs. Schwinn's not knocking on my door wondering where he is.
Hi, Colby.
Hi. Um, so I'm Colby, Colby Belcom, and thank you all for letting me provide an update on our current school year. And I'm excited to tell you what's been happening in our school recently. So I've been heavily involved with our school for most of my high school career. One thing I love is the ability to be able to join so many different types of clubs and be a part of multiple clubs at once. Our school has a variety of clubs to offer, and it's hard just to pick one. I'm able to be involved in so many clubs in our school thanks to the teacher's coordination and creating a schedule so that club meetings don't overlap. I also love the ability clubs allow students to create a difference in our school. For example, the student council decorates the foyer around each holiday. I love being a part of making the school look a little more festive during the holidays. Plus, a lot of students and teachers enjoy walking in and seeing them early in the morning. Clubs also allow students to spread positivity around the school. Speak Out recently passed out hearts to the teachers, and we had them write positive messages about their students. And we posted the hearts in the halls so the students could see how much our staff cares about them. Clubs also allow us to work with the community. The National Honor Society is looking forward to their next blood drive in April. And I was able to be a part of our first blood drive this year, and it was a fun experience seeing the community come in and donate, and also our fellow students and staff to come and donate to a great cause. Um, as Mr. Pullen said, music is a huge part of my life. So of course, I'm in our school musical, which is now only about a month away. The entire cast is excited for our performance, and we are all gearing up to have a great show. I'm so glad that we were able to have a show for my final year because like all of the COVID stuff. And I can't wait to perform as the male lead in my final production here at NRW. And I also can't wait to come back and watch future productions. Um, I also have been involved in sports since middle school. And one thing I love about our school is that we have the ability to join pretty much any sport we want, even if we've never done it before. So being a small school allows us to try out many different sports to see what we like enjoy. I myself am trying track for the first time this year. And I also have been swimming since fifth grade, and I had a great final season with my team. We made it to state quals. And I was lucky enough to have my sister join me for my last season. So, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. It does sound like you're extremely busy.
Yeah.
And keeping up your grades as well. That's a marvelous, marvelous thing. I'm looking forward to seeing the musical, and we're so glad there is going to be a musical. The whole community loves the school musicals. Does anyone on the board have anything they'd like to say to Colby? Paul?
Colby, what are your plans after school, after high school?
Um, so as of now, I'm planning on taking, taking a gap year because I want to go into theater school. So I'm going to be taking like dance lessons and piano lessons and a whole bunch of stuff so that I'm prepared when I go into theater school because it'll be a really rigorous course. And eventually I want to become a drama teacher.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Great. Come back and do musicals at North Rose Wilkett Central, right? Linda?
Colby, I, I love your enthusiasm and how you're so well-rounded. I usually give the report for the high schools, so there's not a lot that I'm going to add after what you've talked about tonight. So good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being with us and get back to rehearsal.
Thank you very much, Colby. Bye-bye.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
So, Cinda, next is actually Scott is going to introduce a course. He and Brian Giri, a tech teacher at the high school, have a new course proposal that we're excited to present to the Board of Education. Certainly, this is the first foray into it, so we're just asking you to, you know, hear the presentation and ask questions tonight. We'll ask you to accept the course recommendation in the future. But really, really excited about this geotech proposal that you're going to hear tonight. Really think that this is going to be a very nice compliment to our Alternative Learning Center and to keeping our students that are very hands-on and tech-savvy engaged in their sophomore year. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott. Let him get going.
Thank you, Mr. Pullen. So appreciate the opportunity from the board to present this proposal tonight. I am joined with Mr. Brian Giri, who is a technology teacher here at the high school. Mr. Giri's put a lot of work and research into coming up with this proposal and putting it together. So a geotech program is a really great opportunity for students interested in pursuing a career in the trades. It really supports the academic community promise in the district's Strategic Action Plan by providing quality academic programming to measure individualized success. And it also lends itself well to fostering collaboration between the school, the students here, and organizations within the community. A geotech program would be the integration of three different courses into one larger program. The three courses would be technology or construction, geometry, and English. Through doing that, we have the opportunity for project-based learning and for the application of math and literacy skills in a technical application. By structuring the program the way that we've kind of envisioned, we're able to use current staff at the high school, which is nice, and it will allow them a team teaching approach to show how the skills in English, math, and technology can be connected and how they're relevant in a real-world workplace setting. The first credit that students would receive in the three-credit program would be a technology credit. The focus here would be on residential and commercial instruction skills. So, uh, you know, focusing on things like electrical wiring, plumbing, framing, drywall, mechanical repair, things that you would do in the construction field. But the other nice component to this is there are things that you could use around the house as well. So even if, you know, down the road, a student was in this program and they didn't end up going into a career in the trades, they would save a lot of money over the course of their life just by having these skills and being able to do things around the house. I know I'm not as handy as I wish I was, and if I had had a course like this where I learned those, it saved me a lot of money now. The second credit of the program would be the math credit. So we'd be utilizing an applied geometry program, and that would be really project-based math that shows how you use geometry and real-world technical situations. They'd be doing things like taking accurate measurements, figuring out angles for roof designs, you know, putting trusses in, putting rafters up, how that all connects. And then also they'll be using the math in determining amounts of supplies that they'll need and costs. So doing project estimations and things of that nature. There's a lot of math involved in that, and so seeing how that works in the construction slash math combination is a good learning spot for them. Then the final credit that they would get would be an English credit. And here they really be focusing on technical literacy. You know, how to read blueprints, plans, put things together, but also the job obtaining and retaining skills that they'll need down the road. So resume writing, cover letter writing, making, working with customers, putting estimates and proposals together, and then having that interaction in a professional written manner with a customer. So that's what the three credits would kind of consist of for the program. And then Mr. Giri is going to just speak to some of the added benefits that geotech can bring. Well, you're muted there, Brian.
Better?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thanks, Scott, and hello, everybody. Hope you're all having a good night tonight. I am a technology teacher at the high school, and after my first year, after looking at the high school, knowing the kids, I saw a need that we needed to bring to North Rose. And that kind of happened through a little collaboration over the summer with some former teachers that I taught with. And they have this program at their school. It's a terrific program. It started out west. It's a collaboration or culmination of geometry, construction, kind of smashed together. It started in an open-wall type of school, and the results have been absolutely outstanding pretty much everywhere that I've heard that it was implemented in. So going through the, going back to the students, we kind of recognize that not everybody's going to go to college. And also that some of the students were very uninterested in school. They were having a, have a tough time like just getting to school and being motivated to be in their classes. So I think this geotech program might be the answer for a lot of students. Not, like I said, not everybody's going to college, so a program like this would maybe either, you know, give them some skills to work with or at least foster an interest in some of the trades that they can get into in BOSI's and then vocationally after school ends. Okay, next slide, Scott. Okay, so, so far, we have kind of reached out to the community without even have the program up and going. Right now, we're working with the Rotary, and they are doing a lot to help us. We're working on two projects right now, one being the mini libraries, where we're building these mini free libraries for Rotary. And the second project, we're going to try to put some type of structure together, but that's kind of in the works now, so I don't really have a plan to tell you about that. But those partnerships are invaluable with the community, and so far, we've built some great relationships. The kids love it, and, you know, the community can kind of look in and see what we're doing at the school. Some other businesses and entities that we're looking at would be Habitat for Humanity, local businesses, of course, and also working with our H, our Buildings and Grounds Department to get some of these projects basically implemented and what we can do with school. So who is a candidate for this geotech program? We've already reached out just to gauge some interest with students, and what we found is there is a pretty strong interest among the student body of ninth graders, both male and female, which is pretty exciting. The course would consist of students in grades primarily 10 to 11, and that's because of the applied geometry portion of it. We're looking to put in about 12 to 14 students. We've reached out to other schools, and that seems like that's the best number or an ideal number of students to have in one place and work on such projects. Academically at-risk students and also students that are doing fine academically, we can take both. And I think it would be positive to have a mixture of both. And again, I said, you know, students are disengaged and having trouble staying in school. We went over to Webster and did a little, a little tour over there, and we were kind of surprisingly shocked to find that these students that were in the program, they were so fully engaged in it, so proud of what they're doing that, you know, they said to us, they came up and said, if this wasn't here, we wouldn't come to school. And that's kind of a lasting impression that we had. And then again, we want vocationally-driven students. Students that are your hands-on students, and we would look for these students through both teacher and council recommendations. So startup cost, I don't think it's a very inexpensive program to start up because there's, there are tools. There's equipment that we need. It would be basically start from scratch. So we're looking for, I put together initial budget of maybe $7,000 where we could buy some portable tools. We could get some air tools. We could get things like hard hats and, you know, hammers and tool belts and anything that you might need on a job site. So it's a pretty expensive program, but I think it's well worth the cost and something that will give back to the community in the end. And that's pretty much all I have, all we have for you for now for this program, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Anyone? John?
Yes.
Maybe you said that, but how many years? Is this a one-year course?
It's a one-year course, and it, and the, kind of the goal is to keep students engaged and then possibly feed them into the BOSI system.
Okay, that's a good idea. Sounds good.
Yeah, that's, that's the one thing that if there is a downside to the program that Webster told us about, they said, well, the program is phenomenal. It's doing everything that we want to do and more, except for, you know, what do we do after the 10th grade? And we have BOSIs where they could go to there and further engage.
Jason?
Made me really happy with this presentation. Our community is begging for...
You're a little soft. Can you up your sound?
I'll get a little closer. You made me really happy with this presentation. Our community is begging for skilled labor, and I think that this will have an instant impact on our community. You hit the hands-on thing, so I won't go into that, but I think you're going to engage a lot more students that possibly you wouldn't have prior to this. My only question was kind of like the same thing that John was asking. Being a one-year program, had you thought anything about possibly bringing seniors back to help with the underclassmen when they start taking the class, just to keep them, keep their minds fresh with what they learned when they were taking it, if they don't go to BOSIs?
We really haven't thought about that, but it's really an interesting suggestion. And I would like to kind of further ponder upon how we would get seniors back in a productive manner where they could actually help with something. It's a great idea. I haven't really thought about that yet. Maybe perhaps an independent study where they would work as foreman to, you know, to the program and really help out students. That's, that's interesting, and thanks for the suggestion.
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Yeah, Linda?
I know that many young people don't really realize, I went to a conference a couple of years ago at MCC, and they were talking about how skilled trades, without going to college in a short amount of time, they are earning just as much, if not more, than people that have, have spent the time and the money and the energy to go for four years to school. And it's something that's always needed in every community, that, you know, they can go anywhere and be successful and support their families. I think it's great that we're starting to do more in this area.
Yeah, thank you on that. And one thing I do with my class is I have a comparison of a doctor versus a plumber. And it kind of shows with a graph how long it takes the doctor to catch up to the plumber making income. And the average age is about 42. Now, after that, the doctor kind of, you know, surpasses a little bit, but the plumber's doing just fine. And before this, before I started working at North Rose, I worked also as a kitchen and bath designer. And that's one of the reasons that I really had to push this because our electrician, and he has his own business, he was making about $250,000 just off of Rochester Bath and Kitchen. So it, it's, it's a really great opportunity, and it's something that I don't think that every student needs to go to college, especially today with the man for skilled trade. And I can't, I just can't say enough about really trying to get students into these skilled trades, which I really don't see yet. So I'm just going to ask if there are no more questions tonight that we, we kind of pause them and gather them up for our next meeting. Scott, Brian, I want to thank you for the presentation. I think it's fantastic to the board and the community. I think that in a matter of short time, you're going to see a real lot of benefits from this type of program. And when you couple it with Gemini Personal Money Management, which is a college-level course that we're offering to our high school students also, and you tailor it to some of the business interests. When you get skilled labor and a business acumen together, you're going to find that a lot of our, our students are going to graduate and be self-sufficient with the skill sets they need to succeed in the ever-changing economy. So we're excited. Thank, gentlemen, you did a great job tonight, and we're going to keep the ball moving. Turn it over to Mr. Blankenberg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Pullen, and good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to share an update about our North Rose Wilkett Athletic Program. Want to start off by just thanking some individuals and some, some folks at school. We just finished our winter season, and our students had a successful experience. And I really want to thank our student athletes for their dedication. We're still coming out of COVID and some of the guidelines that they had to follow, we're still following some of those things, and they, they did a great job. Our parents for their support of their students. We've got a dedicated group of coaches that put a lot of hard work and effort into our students. Our transportation department for getting our various teams to and from all our athletic events. Our maintenance departments for, you know, making sure our facilities are ready, our parking lots are plowed, sidewalks are ready to go. Nurses' offices for making sure we've got physicals and all the medical end of athletic participation. Take care of our food service for providing food for our athletes on long trips. You know, and our building administration, obviously, our Board of Education for supporting our athletic program. So as we get into the presentation, it's going to be similar to the other departments and buildings that have shared things. So we're going to start off, I'm going to talk a little bit about some partnerships. Our first three up there are really important to our athletic program at, at North Rose Wilkett. Our Booster Club, we've got a Booster Club that's outstanding. They support all our extracurriculars and several other school activities, thousands of dollars that they pump into our student activities to help support those. And the recognitions are so important, and we really appreciate the partnership with them. Our Hall of Fame Committee is a great group of individuals who's really looking out to recognize our North Rose Wilkett athletes and honor their achievements. And then also Marshall Park, we've got a great partnership with the park. Not only our school uses that, but our, our community activities use Marshall Park. And we really appreciate some of those, of those partnerships. And, you know, continuing partnerships, and one of the most important things that we wanted to focus on this year is, is, you know, improving communication and making it, making information very accessible for parents. You've heard about Parents Square. We've used that primarily for our communication for athletic program. A few weeks back, I totaled up the communications and at our modified sports level, so our seventh and eighth graders, there was 82 different parent squares that went on about middle school sports. High school at that time, there was 94 to date that had gone out. So I think that's been a great addition, and we're glad that we have that. Our athletic registration is online. We use something called Family ID. You know, back a few years ago, there was several large packets of information for parents to fill out, for students to, to participate in athletics. And now we've, we've gone to an online system where it's a one-stop shop. So, you know, between the student, the parent, the athletic department, the nurse, the coaches, you know, we're not, we're not looking for papers that maybe have been misplaced and things, and it's all online, and it's a very user-friendly system. Our schedules for all our athletic events is, is right online, and it's a very interactive, knowledgeable piece that you can find out your, your student's schedule, other schedules for all our athletic programs. Team pitchers, you know, that used to be a struggle where you'd have to send the forms home. The parents would have to put the money in to purchase team, team pitchers. It's now all online, which makes it really easy and concise. And, you know, the day of the event, if you forget to send your student in with money to purchase, you know, now it's online, so you could do it up to 48 hours later. And our social media presence, we have a pretty good social media presence for athletic department on Instagram and Twitter. And I know that we, we do pump out a lot of information on Facebook also for our athletic program. This is an example of our online scheduling program that's linked right to our website. And this is, this is actually from over a year ago. It's just a screenshot of what it, what it looks like, but it listed the time, what sport it is. If you didn't know, like 7 o'clock that night, there was a girls' basketball game at North Rose Wilkett High School. If you're coming from Lyons and you weren't sure how to get here, if you just put your cursor over North Rose Wilkett, it would give you a map. Back over to the middle a little bit, there's a little camera that says live with our live streaming events. If you just click on that button, you can see our, our game being livestreamed. This year, we had to put some other information there also, like if you were coming to a game, there was a mask requirement, so we had that information listed for parents to be able to see. Yep, we require a mask and, and those types of things. And last year, we had restrictions with attendance. We would also put that information in there. Livestreaming was something that really came about last year with, with COVID and the restriction for spectators. But it's become a, a, something that's commonplace now, and it's an expectation. So that's actually a screenshot of our, our livestream that goes through our YouTube station for games, and you can see scoreboard is right down the lower left-hand corner. It's really a great, great feature, especially if you've got other family members who can't attend for one reason or another or someone who's out of town. We still, we still offer that. Our goal for equity, we like to offer opportunities for our students that they're interested in as much as possible. Obviously, there's some constraints and feasibility, but funding, you know, what's... as much as possible. Obviously, there's some constraints and feasibility, but funding, you know, what's available in our league, scheduling, facility-wise equipment. Right now, we offer thirteen girls' sports and thirteen boys' sports in the sports of soccer, cross-country, volleyball, tennis, swimming, bowling, basketball, wrestling, indoor and outdoor track, Alpine skiing, baseball and softball, and golf. For social, emotional, I've got a chart here, but the most important thing to me is, is students getting involved in extracurricular activities and being involved in schools. Regardless what it is, you know, a club activity, music, the arts, interscholastics, obviously are, are my focus, but those are very important to try to get back some of our socially emotional needs from pre-COVID. So I've got a chart, this is the high school participation nine through twelve. It's a four-year comparison and it's broken down into the fall, winter and spring. And really, our, our goal is, has been is to, to get our participation numbers up to above where they were pre-COVID. So if you look at twenty eighteen, nineteen, where some of our numbers were, like in the fall, there was a hundred and twenty-four fall athletes that participated in that year. You know, if you kind of look, you know, we've kind of been in that range the last four years, but we're not growing like we like. But again, we want that number to continue to, to go up, especially coming out of COVID. You know, again, working over to our winter season. You know, we're not, we really haven't surpassed where we were prior to COVID, but we haven't fallen off. But our goal is to again, to move up and keep those participation numbers high. I don't have the spring yet because we're just gonna start our spring season at the high school level next week. You know, and overall, and hopefully we can continue to see those numbers grow because athletic participation is, is so important. This is a look at our, our modified participation. In the fall, we had seventy-two students participate in interscholastics. In the winter, we had seventy-eight. Really for our goal is, is somewhere forty percent of our class or forty percent of the population to participate. If we can get forty percent or better, typically that, that helps us fill out all the levels, modify JV and varsity. And that really equates to, to a healthy athletic program, you know, where you can provide those, those opportunities for students. And you know, as you can see, you know, we're, we're pretty close to that forty percent, but we want to keep that growing and going up. And, you know, unfortunately, as we, as a league, we look around, you know, several of our neighboring schools continue to show some drop in participation and that equates to no programs, which makes it hard scheduling. But we've been fortunate where we've had good participation, especially the last two years and, and this year coming out of COVID. But again, we want those, you know, the goal is to get those numbers to, to continue to grow. And again, you know, this year, kind of getting back to some of the traditional things that, that we didn't have, you know, a year ago and, and two years ago, the homecoming activities, senior nights and pep rallies and those types of things. So, you know, real important to, you know, real important to get our students back engaged where the student body can attend athletic events. You know, and it's not just two people per student athlete, which it was for most of last year, but, you know, student body back, family members, community members that want to come up and, and, and watch our athletic, our athletes participate. Academics, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, about fifteen years ago, started a scholar-athlete program. And that's based on ninety percent GPA for a team during their season. And on the left, you'll see our, our fall teams. We, we had five out of, five out of the seven teams hit that mark of ninety percent or better during the season. So that's a, a great accomplishment. And I did list two teams at the bottom. And it's not to call those individuals out, but they were one point away, less than one point away from, from earning that scholar-athlete team. And then again, in the winter, a little bit better, we had six out of seven teams get to that mark. And again, we were one point away from having all our winter teams be recognized. So, you know, congratulations to our student athletes. You know, it shows that they're, you know, also working hard in their athletics, but also in the classroom. And that's, that's, that's a great, great thing to have. So we're proud of them and really appreciate their, their efforts in the classroom and in their athletics. Typically, a high school or a school budget for athletics is less than one percent of the overall budget. To me, that, that's a, a great value when you think about doing a cost analysis per athlete. You know, if you think a season is anywhere from eight to twelve weeks long, excuse me, and practices are, you know, four to six days a week, a minimum of two hours. And, you know, we provide uniforms, supplies, certified coach, transportation. You know, in an education-based program, I think you're getting a pretty good bang for your buck. If you were to send your student to a camp, excuse me, for a camp for a week, you know, you're looking to pay over four hundred dollars. If you were gonna sign your student up for a, a travel sport, you know, that could be anywhere from five hundred to, you know, over thousands of dollars, not including traveling. So I think we do, you know, the services we provide in athletics are, are very valuable. And you know, we look at trying to be fiscally responsible. We've got a replacement plan in place for our equipment and supplies. You know, we want to try to do our, by the best quality with, you know, the fiscal constraints we have. We utilize competitive bidding processes through BOSI's. So we have twenty-five schools in our BOSI's that participate in a, a BOSI's wide phys ed and athletic bid. So there's twenty-five schools and, you know, so let's take a basketball, for example. So instead of North Rose buying twenty Spalding basketballs, you've got twenty-five different schools, you know, coming together in a bid process to purchase balls. You know, another, another example is, you know, when we look to buy things, it's on state contract. You know, and some other things we do, we've mentioned the live streaming and that really took off last year and the, the company that provides that's Huddle. And Huddle, instead of every school going out and buying a Huddle camera and the software that goes with it, there was a BOSI's cursor established. So the Huddle camera actually was purchased through BOSI's. And now we'll get state aid back on, on a situation like that. So kind of looking for those situations. Another good example is state championships. So we'll talk a little bit later and you've, you've heard about our athletes that have attended state championships. So, you know, there was fifty wrestlers from our area from section five that went to state championships in Albany. So instead of each of those forty or forty-five schools, you know, getting their own bus, getting their own hotel, we do it as a section, we charter a bus. They get a, a reserve a block of hotel rooms and then bill the schools back. Bus drivers, you know, a few athletics are struggling because lack of bus drivers in many school districts. So Jeremy Barnes does a great job working with, you know, our, our neighboring schools. If, you know, we can help another athletic team get to a contest and we can give them a, a ride on our way, we do that and vice versa. You know, like one of the things we do in our league for cost savings is instead of each school buying their own field paint for athletic fields, we do it together. We do a competitive bid. So instead of each group just doing it, so it lowers the price substantially and we get a better value for that. So some highlights this year, in the fall, we had eighteen of our students who were recognized as All-Stars within our league or section. We're just wrapping up our winter season now. We don't have the winter All-Stars yet, but we'll soon have that information and be able to publicize that, recognize that. I know you've heard a lot about this, but we had three of our athletes that went to state competitions this year, which is an outstanding accomplishment. Noah in wrestling went to the state championship and, and, and finished seventh. Great accomplishment. He's only an eleventh grader. And I guess I'll give him a quick plug. The other night, we had a modified wrestling match and Noah showed up and was running one of the scoreboards, you know, and here's a, here's a guy that just finished seventh in the state and, you know, he's, he loves wrestling so much, he's, he's given back. Vivian Bishop, only a seventh, or I'm sorry, only an eighth grader, you know, made it to the state competition, finished twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth in the Psalm, Psalm and Giant Psalm. You know, we could go. So she's really got a bright future. And our last guy, Jack Defoe, who went to the state championship down in Staten Island last weekend and finished third in his relay team. So there are really some outstanding performances and, you know, a lot to be proud of with those, with those students and, and actually all of our student athletes. So I want to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to share this information and your continued support for athletic program. We really appreciate it. And if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to.
Anyone? John?
I don't have a question, but I, I will say that I appreciate Mark being at all the contests that I've gone to in the fall and winter. And also our monitors who are there. They do a great job with the, the audiences there. And I thank you, Mark, for being there. It's a, it's, it sets a lofty goal for our coaches because they're, you're right there with them and being one of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate you attending events too.
We're so glad that our students are able to have these opportunities. And that we, I know it was a struggle through COVID, but I'm glad you made it through and are having a successful year this year. Thank you very much.
So thank you. And as Mark said, we appreciate both the Board of Education and the community's support for our athletic programs. And we would like to thank Mr. Barno because without his skill set and the fiscally sound approach that he's put us in, we wouldn't be able to offer as many things as we've offered because this year we were able to offer four teams, two modified girls, two modified boys' basketball teams. And that wasn't really the plan initially, but due to Gary's diligence and finding some money, we were able to offer that. So Gary, I'm gonna turn it over to you, let you get started with the budget program.
As soon as I take myself off mute here, thank you. And I really don't deserve that credit. But I, I did like Mr. Blankenberg's section, talking about being fiscally restrained and all that. We appreciate that, but it's, they, they certainly get a lot of bang for the buck, for the dollars that go into that program. And, and I know everyone's proud of it. So having said that, you know, another tough fact to follow here, we go from sports to budgets. I mean, in terms of interest, some, for, for some, it goes straight down. Anyhow, starting off tonight's budget, again, just showing the budget guidelines, I, I just drew that up there. We see it in many of our past presentations, just to keep our eye on the ball and let the public know that as we develop this budget, we are keeping these guidelines in mind as we, as we progress on the budget. Next slide, please. Okay, so tonight, I'm giving you this first big look at the budget. You've seen some of the numbers before, going back to the February tenth meeting. We took, you, you saw basically this number, it hasn't changed a lot. From a month ago, we're at three point three percent increase on the budget. We're at about three point four. My goal is to keep us there, keep us within our budget targets. Because this budget, as you'll see in the next couple of slides, is offset by our revenues. And so we'd love to pour more money into so many areas like our athletics and our educational programs. But as we know, we have to face reality because all these things have to be paid for, right? So tonight, I'm gonna show you some different looks at the budget, the overall budget with the next, the, the following, some of the following slides. And then we'll get into what we're gonna focus on certain areas of the bu- budget tonight and talk about that. So next slide, please. So we just saw the appropriation, appropriations side of the budget or the expenditure side. We have to balance this budget, right, with our revenues. You've seen this look before and our, you, you've actually seen these numbers before, only they, it's increased just a little bit, some a minor increase in, in the use of reserves and some other minor shifting going on to get us to that three point four percent on the revenue side. So again, we talked a lot a month ago about the levy and the overall revenues and kind of broke that down. So this is, this is where we stand right now on the revenue side. And just to remind everyone that the numbers that we're looking at right now, it's still a tentative budget. We have three, four more opportunities to look at this budget before it is finalized. So it is coming together. I don't expect it to change too much from now, but it, it will be tweaked over the, over the next several weeks. Okay, next slide, please. So just to to show you a different way, put the, the revenue side on one side of the screen and the expenditure side on the other. Here is our balanced budget in the major categories of revenues, the major functional areas of the budget. Next slide, please. This is a comparative look at our budget. How we compare with last year in the changes in each of these major functional areas from one year to the next. So we got an overall increase, three point four. If you take a look at our, these general functional areas, you can kind of see some fluctuations up and down. The biggest functional area that's, that's taken the biggest hit in terms of increase is what we talked about. We, going back to really our January meetings, we're talking about our major cost drivers and health insurance and to some extent retirement rates are really affecting the increases on, on this budget. So we look for other areas of the budget where we can pull back a little bit and still maintain our quality program and contractual obligations so forth. So that's a quick little look overall, how we compare from one year to the next. And the bar graph on the right gives you kind of an idea of the parity from, from one year to the next. Thank you. Next slide. And again, on the revenue side of the budget, just another comparison from one year to the next. And the, the graph kind of illustrates the, the changes from one year to the next. And we are going to be talking over the next few meetings more. We're gonna be drilling down more into some of the expenditures and talking a little bit more about these revenues. Next slide, please. So here's that comparative look. Again, I just want to give you a snapshot here and go to the very next slide. Thank you. And so just pulling out these four different areas from, from that previous slide on the comparative budget. So what I wanted to do tonight is to pull these areas out of, and I'm calling this the operational and support review of our budget. So these four major functional categories, we can go to the next slide. Just another way of looking at it of the entire budget, pulling out these colored sections of, of the pie there to illustrate just what we're looking at here tonight. So we're looking at about twenty-six, almost twenty-seven percent of our overall budget by focusing in, in a little bit on these areas of the budget. And these are the non-instructional areas of the budget and not including the benefits. So that, that category or those two categories represent about close to seventy-two or seventy-three percent of the budget. But tonight, we're gonna focus on, on these four areas. So next slide, please. And we're gonna start with the general support budget. The board's used to getting a monthly treasurer's report. It's, it breaks down these functional areas of the budget. And so here's the general support budget. Update myself on my slides, my hand copies. So so this budget, this area of the budget, the general support really represents about 12% of the overall budget. Right? And you can see some of the items, how they're broken down there. The largest group there is central services, and then there's special items. So we're going to move to the next slide. And get a real breakdown of what's in the general support budget. Because it sounds very vague, right? But there's a lot of things in here. And the biggest area of the budget is in our central services. So I've kind of listed all the items that are covered under central services. That's our building and grounds. That's our plant, our maintenance of the plant. So in all of these functional areas of the budget, there's there's salary items, there's equipment, there's supplies, there's other contractual budgeted expenditures, there's BOSI's expenditures generally throughout throughout the budget. And we'll take a closer look at that in in another presentation. But this special items that down towards the bottom there includes probably about three quarters of our insurance costs, little association dues. There's a small amount there for refunds, property taxes, and then one of the larger ticket items for belonging to the BOSI's services and our share of covering their administrative costs is is there also. And that is something, of course, that the board well knows that they vote on every year. So there's a lot of things in the general support budget. And the previous slide kind of shows some some of the changes and and how those areas look compared to one another. And then we're showing a comparative from one year to the next. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. Besides the general support, one of the other areas is our transportation budget, and we all know how important this is. The transportation budget is about four and a half percent of our overall budget. And next year's budget, we're looking at just over $1.5 million to run our, I would say, highly effective and transportation department. So some of the highlights here that kind of reflect an increase in the overall transportation budget of just over 5% or 5.3% would be our contractual contractual salary increases again. Well, those salary increases budget wide are just over over 3%. So the increase here due to salaries, some increased fuel costs, those lines. I know I'm going to have to revisit after this last week and a half, just seeing how those how our fuel costs are just skyrocketing. So even though I currently got just under a 15% increase in in those fuel lines, they'll they'll need to be revisited, I'm sure. So between now and the time we finalize this budget, I don't although I don't anticipate the budget going up very much because we want to keep our tax rates below that 2%. And that's 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 our budget target there. So we can't indiscriminately increase one line without taking away from some other lines. So we still have a lot of soul searching to do and tightening of the of the belt to help items like fuel costs that we know are skyrocketing, right? Some of the other areas in the transportation is additional service through BOSI's to help train our drivers on their CDLs, their 19A driver training. So there's been new changes at the federal level that is that has really forced us to jump on board with the BOSI's program for for 19A driver training service. So and and part of that is just the testing in a and there's specifics as as far as the area where they drive in and so forth. So this is a little bit above and beyond our current capabilities. And like most districts, we are joining this service. So and I think that is just about $18,000, $18,000, $20,000 in that area. So that has a material impact on the overall transportation budget. Other items that we want to make sure that we're fully covering are some of our contractual items such as our routing software and the support for that. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this third area of these this operational support is our debt service budget. So this is an area of the budget, sometimes referred to as along with the benefits is the undistributed area. So you might see it referred to as that, but this is to help pay off the principal and interest portions of our debt. So we incurred debt generally when we begin a capital project and we go out and borrow serial bonds generally. We start off usually with short term notes, but they get converted to longer term notes. And over a period of 10, 15, or 20 years, depending on how that debt is structured, the district will pay that off. And by the way, we receive aid on this debt. So when we do go out for our capital projects, we we anticipate the aid being spread out. The the state actually spreads that that building aid out over the over the 10 or 15 years of the of the of the debt. So aid kind of correlates with the debt payment. So we try to keep that stable. And the the portion that's not covered by aid is all projects are 100% aidable. We cover and we always make every attempt to, and that's what we're we're attempting to do, replenish our capital reserves. We use our capital reserve money to fund the local share, if you will, of these projects. So we have actually just a small decrease in our debt service for next year as compared to this year. Okay, next slide, please. By the way, that debt service represents just under 1% of our budget. And the the last piece of the pie here I want to talk about tonight is the interfund transfers within our budget. There are three line items here. They represent about a half a percent of the overall budget. But they're very important pieces. So the the first line I'm showing directly from the line item of the budget is we we anticipate transferring $30,000 into our food service program. That that is not unlike most other school districts whose food service program traditionally all that program has 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 experienced a lot of volatility and changes and funding and so forth over the last couple of years. But that is designed to help offset basically administrative costs and special special needs, non-operational cost for the food service program. The other line item that's in there is it's called a transfer to the special aid fund. That is specifically for the summer school handicap program. And that program is funded generally 80% through state aid. Okay, and the other 20% is is on the backs of the local portion or the or the district. So the the line there is being decreased from prior years. Our history shows that we don't quite need $87,000 or into the $80,000 to support that that 20% share. That has gone down to 62,000 as of this point. And as we talked about in our last presentation to the board was was our capital outlay projects. So we have a those projects are many projects that we've been doing for years and it's a great idea. It's a great bang for the buck. We talked about it in a little a lot more detail at our last meeting, but our $100,000 is is the maximum allowable. We we can put into our budget without separate voter approval, but different than our major capital projects, we can do a smaller project for under $100,000 and we will get building aid on that project in the following year. Unlike other projects where we receive the aid over the 10 or 15 years. Okay, and I just made a note that we talked about it before. We're planning phase one of some library improvements at the high school with that $100,000 for next year. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. And so wrapping up the the budget, just to keep us in check of where we are in terms of the budget timeline, we this is our now fifth budget presentation since our first meeting in January. It's our sixth budget discussion. We started back in October. So we've really come a long ways, but we still have a ways to go, right? And we have some more opportunities now to review those other areas of the budget. Take some different looks at that budget. You'll see with our next presentation. Besides including the instructional and benefit areas of the budget, we'll be showing the board and the public some some other areas. And and getting to the close of the budget, which we will have in April. Okay, so we will be meeting these timelines to have a have a sound budget in place by April 14th, when the board is legally required to adopt the budget. And then we'll be ready to show the entire budget and it's that's full package at the budget hearing on May 5th. Okay, and so that's all I have for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Tina.
Gary, I I was very pleased to see we were sharing a lot more of things we do with other school districts with the BOSI's. A small thing obviously is like the central publishing and printing. It might be small, but it shows that we, you know, if you have a combined group of people, schools using the service, it is cheaper and more efficient. The same with the bus driver training. You know, these are good things to do. And I was wondering about how in heaven's name you ever could figure out how much the cost of fuel will be.
But I like to say I do not have a crystal ball.
Well, if you if you come up with a crystal of a formula, the people in Washington would like to talk with you.
Yeah, we're smiling, but it is it's very serious. It's hitting us all in the pocket, not just but but the school district as as well to keep our buses running, keep our maintenance people going. So it it's yet another challenge to the budget. But I do appreciate appreciate the comment, especially with the BOSI services. I I think it's most of our experience that these services are are provided by professionals. We get a good bang for the buck. We do get aided on the on the BOSI's expense. We depend on that aid from year to year. So those those services, it's always a good idea. They're shared to defray that cost to come together with with other districts and run these programs.
Jason?
Hi, Gary. I just wanted to thank you for the new format for the presentation for the budget. I think it hit on a lot of things that we talked about that made past presentations a little confusing for us that aren't involved in it every day. So kudos to you. You headed out of the park. I read through the whole thing earlier and I didn't have any questions, so.
Thank you. Really, I I'd like to thank the board for being patient as this process, the one that I'm used to delivering. And I know it's a different process for you, being patient because the budget isn't put together in January. And like I said, these numbers are were in the ballpark. They're gonna they're going to be modified a little bit. They're not going to change too much. We're we're kind of confined to our resources, but you haven't seen it all yet. And hopefully, as I said, early in the process, by the time we get to that April 14th meeting, my my goal and superintendent's goal is to make sure we we feel comfortable and we're not scratching our head at that point saying, where are we here? I don't understand this or that. So the the goal is to provide you as much in a very transparent way, but 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 also in some respects, keep keeping it relatively simple.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pollan, you want to move on to the middle school?
Please, then. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Well, great job again tonight. So Mrs. Collier, after this presentation from the middle school, I just asked that we allow them to dismiss. It's been, as you know, a busy day, and these guys have been patient waiting for us. But I think you're going to be pretty pleased to see some things that are in progress with Mr. Matthews and his staff. Got a talented group of individuals, collection of teachers, school psychologists, assistant principal and principal presenting to us tonight. And we have special area teachers, general ed teachers as well. So actually, really pleased to see even Tara's daughter participated earlier in the meeting, jumped up on mom's lap, which I think is fantastic because we want all of our staff and families to feel welcome. So really looking forward to this presentation. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Pollan.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure seeing you this evening. Introducing the members of the North Rose Wilkens School Leadership Team as as Mr. Pollan did. Sarah Bulgard, Sarah Oshker, Tara Daly, Brady Farin and Casey Dewis-Balir. We keep our vision and and mission in mind with the decisions we make. They drive our our they drive a lot of our thinking as it relates to our students. You can see that there has been some regression in student performance on the Ames Web Winter Benchmark. These performance benchmarks don't reflect the progress required to meet our year end proficiency goal in reading or math. 90%, our goal being 90% of students meet those proficiency rates on Ames Web and Reading and Math. We believe that some pieces have begun falling into place. And we've had some honest conversations with one another as we review this information. And we've determined to focus our efforts on building oral reading fluency skills and number sense fluency in our students. Just as an example, you can see at grade five, 45% of our students are either well below or below average in oral reading fluency on the winter benchmark. Ames Web Plus has a progress monitoring tool that can be used effectively to keep us informed of student progress and growth in this area. We have a regular schedule for reviewing and responding to student progress that we think will help us adjust to meet student needs. You can notice this slide is number sense fluency for grade eight. 32% of students at grade eight are well below or below average in number sense fluency on the winter benchmark. Likewise, Ames Web Plus has a progress monitoring tool that can be used effectively to keep us informed of student progress. Likewise, Ames Web Plus has a progress monitoring tool that can be used effectively to keep us informed of student progress in this area as well. We believe that through a regular review of student progress in this area will help us respond to student need and catch students before they regress. We also use, like the elementary school showed last month, we use the rate of improvement growth norms report, which can help us focus our efforts in specific areas. So this slide shows student rate of improvement and range in number sense fluency, five through eight. You can see a range of proficiency with the gray bars for each grade level. And the horizontal line that cuts across each bar represents the average for that grade level. This view also helps us see what areas are in need of the most support. Mrs. DeWispelier, we'll talk a little bit more about our plans to respond to students and our academic program.
All right, so in response to the data that Mark just shared. And in order to meet our academic goals, we are working to improve the use of Ames Web Progress Monitoring, as he talks about a little bit. Especially in our tier one instruction to respond to students who scored well below and below average on the midyear administration of Ames Web Assessment. On this intervention tool provides regular feedback that supports student learning and growth in areas of need as indicated by these assessments. We are also working with teachers in math and ELA to participate in trainings, which will be provided by our instructional coach on how to use progress monitoring as part of tier one instruction. And support to teachers on the use of this tool will be ongoing in order to best respond to student needs. To help close gaps in mathematical skills and concepts at grades five through eight. We will be working with Lori Elliott to identify digital resources that will provide students with reteach and practice opportunities. Many teachers are actually already using various various digital resources. And we're working to identify what is being used and how students are responding to them. And finally, again, in response to data that Mr. Matthew shared, fifth and sixth grade math teachers and seventh and eighth grade English teachers will be provided with support in how to use student assessment data to target instruction. And and especially how to develop that differentiated learning opportunity for our students. Again, our instructional coach will be working with teachers to help develop this in order to meet the various learning needs of our students.
Hi, my name is Tara Daly. I teach art at the middle school. As a reminder, our annual goal for equity is we will make high quality education accessible to all students through the MTSS process. Right now, we're working on achieving this goal by revisiting the TFI to refine our MTSS process at the middle school. Currently, we are improving the communication among all departments and grade levels to make sure special area teachers, therapists, interventionists, aides and all teachers are informed on how to help our students be the most successful learners that they can be. We're utilizing set agendas and action steps at each tier to allow seamless communication and progression. We're working towards consistency for tier one interventions across the school for both behavior and academic. It's always our goal to be transparent and transparent and involve both the students and their families when implementing an intervention strategy. And having a sound structure and action steps for MTSS is our most pertinent point. Our instructional coach has been working on training teachers on Ames Web for progress monitoring, goal setting and other professional development opportunities that have been offered to teachers. They help make our data informed decisions. And the activity period after school is being utilized for students who need academic help. For example, some students have tier one support for academics. They use the activity period with a set schedule to stay on top of their schoolwork.
Hi, Gavin, I'm Sarah Oshker and I'm the middle school instructional coach. To work towards our annual goal and SEL, we're currently displaying Cougar Expectations in all areas of our school. And Cougar Pride is working on creating booster lessons that will demonstrate these expectations. We are refining structure for common areas, including the hallways, bathrooms and the cafeteria. We also were able to put the round tables back in the cafeteria. And we explicitly taught the students what the Cougar Expectations would look like during the town hall. And students and staff have provided feedback that they're enjoying, that the students can have relationships and communicate in the cafeteria. And staff and students have also acknowledged that behavior has improved during the lunch time and after. So transitioning back into class. We have met at tier one grade level meetings to talk about consistent expectations for students across the grade level and handing out Cougar Cash to reinforce them. Our last Cougar Store was a huge success. The raffles were really intriguing to our students. Mr. Matthews even hosted a pizza party with a small group of students as one of the raffle prizes. And a total of one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven Cougar Cash was spent just on raffles alone. Our Cougar Pride team has revamped our shout outs and students and staff are recognizing each other with shout outs over announcements. Grade level tier one meetings are also using the Panorama Survey to target specific skill areas in need and implement strategies that are outlined in the playbook that the site provides. An example of this in the classroom would be creating like a common calm down area, but have it teacher driven. Teachers are getting refreshers on how to give specific feedback connected with our Cougar traits when using our check in checkout sheet with students. Our grade level teams competed in a penny wars. And the fifth graders won. The money that was donated is going to the Ronald McDonald House. And all students in fifth grade had a block party with team building and STEM activities. Student council representatives helped lead these activities in the classroom. We are continuing our for you Fridays for staff. Staff really enjoyed the trail mix bar here in the last one that we had. We also have been having pickup games in the gym, leisurely reading in the library. And people are walking around the halls for just exercise and conversation. And finally, second step in life skills is still happening. And Sarah Pierce has started to have small social and emotional based groups throughout the day.
I'm Sarah Bogard, I'm the school psychologist at the middle school. So we are always looking for opportunities to increase our communication between our staff and our families. We are increasing our use of social media by sharing more examples of student learning, student success through the district Facebook page, the district Instagram pages. We're really trying to get a lot of that out there for families and communities to see that. Just like Mr. Blankenberg talked about Parents Square, we're really finding the use of Parents Square to really be very helpful in sharing out information that's important to families such as calendar updates, giving parents information about upcoming events, different information about like the Chromebooks, any kind of information. Sending that out through Parents Square has been very helpful. I know as a parent myself, I find it very helpful because I can go back if I forgot. I can scroll back and find that post really quickly and figure out, you know, what time pickup is tomorrow. We are focusing more on if there is a student concern, really having a personal contact. So we're not using Parents Square for actual specific student concerns. We're trying to do more of a personal contact for that. And if teachers are struggling to make that personal contact, we've been utilizing our parent liaison to help assist the teachers with making those contacts with families. We've also been increasing our involvement with families and students in our MTSS process, much like Tara had mentioned. We're having parents and families into our meetings more often. And we're inviting students to sit in on those meetings to help create plans to help them be successful. And we're really excited to have more in person events. So we're hoping to have or we're having our career day later this spring. We're hoping to have our eighth grade dinner in person. We have our first in person dance coming up in a couple of weeks. We're talking about some field trips that we're looking forward to, in person concerts and award ceremonies. So we're really looking forward to having more people back in our building, more families and community members back in our building. And like I mentioned, our parent liaison has been really, really helpful in making those contacts with families that have been difficult for teachers to make because they might not be available during their planning periods. So our parent liaison has been really helpful in evenings and weekends, being able to make some of those.
So we believe that being fiscally responsible is a shared responsibility from all of us. So we want to make sure that our spending supports student outcomes and aligns with the district mission and vision. We created a central storage and when we did an inventory of all those supplies, it totaled over eight thousand dollars. We're also reviewing our staff budget allocations and we're we're adjusting those based on student need. And we're working with our school leadership team to analyze student data to inform our decisions and make sure that our spending improves student social emotional learning, improves academic outcomes, and also is focused on diversity, equity and inclusion.
And now are there any questions? We're happy to field any questions at this time.
Any board members? I think you're very, oh, Paul, you do. Paul?
Yes, please. Hi, Mark and Brady, welcome back. On the fourth and fifth slides, we had academics or oral reading fluency and then I think math, number sense fluency. So I was just, my question is specific, the the green average, is that the national average or is that our school average or class average?
It's a great question. So that would be in comparison to national norms. So the the Ames Web assessments used nationally. And the average and proficiency that's calculated based on where students fall at that particular time, at that particular grade. Nationally, all students who who participate in Ames Web Benchmark.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, I was nodding my head. Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Couldn't hear my head rail, right?
No, I couldn't hear that. Anyone else? I can't see everyone, so.
I have I have one question, Cindy.
Jason?
First, I want to thank everyone for working through the ever changing learning environment. You guys have gone through a lot, the whole district has, and I appreciate it. Knowing that we had a we were impacted this winter pretty pretty greatly on positive COVID cases. And if you don't have the statistic, it's fine, you can send it to me later. I'd just be curious how our absences looked this winter compared to fall.
Oh, we could definitely take a look at that and send it to Mr. Pollan. And and we could certainly share that that information. We should be able to get that pretty easily.
Just seems like that probably was a a fight that you were fighting a lot, just because of the number of cases that Wayne County had this winter.
I would say our absenteeism is is quite high in comparison to the past years at this point in the year.
I would piggyback on that as well and just say that, you know, we've watched that across the board in something that we're going to look at with respect to attendance in general. You know, when we talk so much about social emotional learning, you know, the disengagement and apathy have been two areas that we talk about. But that certainly has a consequence when it comes down to school attendance and school participation. And I wouldn't be surprised if we see some improvements to our code of conduct as it relates to tardiness and absenteeism next year. In fact, I would almost hedge a bet and say that you're going to see us address those areas.
And I was leaning more towards the the mandatory quarantine periods for positive students. And I wasn't certain that that was a national average, the question that Paul had. But knowing that now, you know, you're kind of at a disadvantage when you live in upstate New York where somebody else on the the West Coast might not be going through the the same heightened COVID that we are. So I those numbers might be skewed a little bit.
Well, I think in all areas, as Mark said with his presentation with athletics, there's a there's a component there where, you know, we're slowly starting getting getting our students back into normal routines and procedures. And, you know, I'd like to compliment this team here because they they've recognized there are some blemishes there. And they're rolling up their sleeves to do the work and they recognize that those little ones like Sarah has on her lap right now are the reason why we do what we do and we want to keep our families and our students engaged. So we're gonna, you know, turn over every rock and figure out whether we can increase athletic participation, academic performance. And just in general, keep our kids in our community moving forward because we think we have some great things here. So I I think you're going to see some of that data unfold in very clear actionable items next year. As far as the apathy, you know, we're going to continue to work on that, continue to foster empathy. And I'll talk a little bit about, you know, our upcoming superintendent's conference day in my report. But I'd like to just say thank you to that team for their presentation and great job. And, you know, if we could, if there are no more questions from the board, let let the administrators and teachers leave so that they can get on with their evening.
Absolutely, thank you for being with us.
Perfect, thank you all. Great job, middle school team. Thank you.
While they're signing off, Isetta, do you have anything to report from the elementary school as the board liaison? I think you're muted.
I was. And yes, I do. And first of all, we'd like to congratulate Addison Crico. And I'm sorry if I murdered the last name. She was selected as a North Rose Walkit Rotary Fourth Grade Student of the Month. And she was selected for that because her consistency and collaborative spirit and also her, excuse me, her support and preservation when it comes to those around her. We also they also want to welcome Adam Bullock from Cornell Cooperative Extension to the elementary school. He is there to work with PE teachers to bring nutrition and healthy eating habits to the second, third and fourth graders. And lastly, they had informational meeting for the UPK kindergarten parents on the eighth. Overall, they had over fifty people attend. Lot of information was shared and they should like to give a big thank you to those who helped Addison Maloney, Lucia Copeland, Jen Carr and Christie Bradford. They did a lot of help putting it helping put it together and helping to provide information and just make it a successful evening. And that's that's our report for tonight. And again, we thank everyone for their help in whatever they do to provide information and education to our students.
Thank you, Isetta. John, do you have a report from the middle school?
Yes, they're very, very excited to have those wonderful New York State ELA exams coming up. Wait for them.
Oh, I'll bet.
And but they do have them coming up. But the other is that they are going to have in person parent and teacher council, parent conferences, I mean, starting next week. It was mentioned before about the penny wars that they raised the five hundred and forty dollars. And it's their their student council will be going to Ronald McDonald House to give the money to them. So it's not just the raising of the money, I think. It's the whole process of selecting it and visiting and doing the whole process. They're also going to have their first dance of the year or the first dance probably in a couple of years. Because I know the fall ones were canceled. And I remember those are quite experienced if to put it mildly. But they're going to have their first one. But it is a is definitely a function of getting together. But they're going to have their first one, but it is a, is definitely a, a function of getting together as a group of people as you would as an adult when you go out with each other. So it's a, it's, it's a good function, a cultural function. So that's what they're gonna be doing.
Great. I think it's, I think it's great when kids learn to serve their communities.
Yeah.
That's great. And just raising the money isn't enough. You're right. Going to it and seeing what it's about is where their money is going is so important. Cinda, do you have a report from the high school?
Yes, actually Colby touched on quite a few things when he was giving his report, but I do have some additional things. Last night and tonight, students are involved with calling for the Dollar for Scholars program. So they're going to be doing that. And our phones aren't ringing because we, because we're, they're off right now. But on March twenty first at the high schools, they're also going to have something called a Save a Life presentation, which is about distracted driving and things to help students be more aware of that, how being distracted really impacts their reaction and can cause accidents. And I'm sure there's some adults that could benefit from that as well. And the other thing is, one of the things that Scott mentioned when we were speaking was that the building is very pleased about the whole transition of masking choices or not masking, how the students really showed respect and open-mindedness to each other and it all went very smoothly. So that was the other thing that I wanted to include.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything to report from Ford County?
Actually, yeah, I do. The, at Ford County, well, there's, there's two things. I got a notice for the Ford County Legislative Committee, we're going to be meeting this Saturday, but it also included notation about for the first time in quite a while, there's going to be an in-person annual general meeting in May. I believe it's on the twenty-sixth. And we are going to have some very special guest speakers. We are going to have the New York State Education Commissioner Betty Rosa will be there, our chancellor Lester Young Jr. will be there, and our own Regent Wade Norwood would be there too. They're requesting, actually they're asking the legislative committee to pull together from our boards things that we would like discussed or touched upon while they're there. So if you would pass along any requests or things you think should be included, I'll be happy to discuss it Saturday when we meet and we'll also have a meeting in April before they come so that if you think of something later on and want to add it, feel free to do so.
Did you say that membership meeting was going to be on May twenty-sixth?
Yes.
That's a board meeting night for us.
Oh, that's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday. It's too bad.
Yeah, it is. Usually they have their meetings on Tuesday.
Well, yeah, they kind of rotate around so they don't hit, no matter what night of the week they put him, some school has a board meeting, so. Yeah, that's too bad because that is a high-powered group there.
Yeah, I would imagine that that would be taped or recorded.
Yeah, I would imagine, yeah.
Be able to see that at another time. I can check in on that and see.
Okay, great, thank you. Paul? Is there anything you'd like to say about the policy? We do have policies on the agenda tonight.
Yes, please. The Policy Committee obtained advice from Council on Exam Session and are forwarding these policies for first read. Fifty-three twelve, District on Cellular Telephones, that policy was from two thousand and six. You can imagine that cell phones have changed a bit since two thousand and six. So that is a complete rewrite. And also, this is a direct reflection of our Strategic Action Plan Community Promises Financial. And actually, I'll just summarize, all five of these are from financial, from our community promises. Financial accountability was fifty-five seventy, some small additions. Basically, it involves internal controls. So that's a revision on that one. Fifty-five seventy-one, allegations of fraud, there's slight improvements, but they're very important ones. So please take a cut on those. Sixty-one ten, Code of Ethics for Board Members and District Personnel, significant additions to this policy. And as you read through it, you know, you might think, well, this is like motherhood or, or common sense, but believe me, our council was, was very adamant about making sure these things are in writing. And this is the one of the five that I would say in addition to community promises and financial, it's also a Kruger Value of Relationships. Sixty-one sixty-one, Conference Travel Reimbursement, significant revision on this one. So again, it was a, it was a good one to update. As always, if you have any questions, please get ahold of me as soon as possible so that we can get these to the board for a second read next time.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Tina, has anyone requested access to the board tonight?
No, they haven't.
All right, we'll move on. We'll move on to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Tina and Jason? Discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion is carried. All right. Now we move over to number six. There's a group of roll call votes, so if I forget and say all in favor, speak up and tell me, no, that's not right. The first one, a motion, please, to approve the SECR resolution for the rooftop mounted mechanical unit. Motion, Paul and John, discussion? Tina, would you take the roll, please? Roll call?
Cinda?
Yes.
John? Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Under six B, a motion, please, to approve the Notice of Public Hearing and Annual School District Election.
No, Cinda, it's the resolution to authorize a capital improvement project.
Hold on.
On page five, item B.
All right, I've got the old agenda, so in front of me. And I did not have the other one. I don't have access to it right this moment. Would you read it, please, Tina, the title?
Yes, the title is a resolution authorizing a capital improvement project at a cost not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand from grant funds pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. Do I have a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve? Jason and Linda, discussion? All in favor? Roll call, I mean.
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
All right, now get me back on track. Is the next one, the Notice of Public Hearing?
No, the next one is seven, which is the language approval for the May seventeenth budget. These are the individual propositions that we have to approve.
So there is no Notice of Public Hearing?
That is further in the agenda.
Later, okay. I must have copied the wrong thing when I put this. I was trying to save paper rather than printing all this out and I obviously shouldn't have done that. Okay, we're on number seven. A motion, please, to approve proposition one, the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. Motion? Isetta and Linda? Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
A motion to approve proposition number two, bus purchases. Jason? Paul? Any discussion? Tina, would you call the roll?
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
A motion to approve proposition number three, the annual appropriations for the Woke Public Library and the Rose Free Library. Motion? Isetta and Linda? Discussion? Call the roll?
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
A motion to approve proposition number four, new capital reserve fund. Motion, John and Jason? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Now we're at the Notice of Public Hearing, Cinda.
A motion, please, to approve the Notice of Public Hearing and the Annual School District Election. Paul? And Linda? Any discussion? You call the roll.
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Now, a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the unsealing and opening of ballot box. John and Isetta? Discussion? Would you call the roll?
Cinda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you. And adding to the agenda, the two items that we added to our agenda. A motion please to we do both of these together?
Yes, you can.
All right, I do. A motion, please, to approve the written agreement between the superintendent and employee of a district and the letter of resignation, Joe Ceratori. Linda? And Isetta? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. All right, that completes our business part. Mr. Pollan? Do you have a superintendent's update for us tonight?
I do, thank you. So I mentioned it earlier and as Tina brings it up on the screen, next Friday, the eighteenth, is our spring superintendent's conference day. You'll recall that back in the fall, we had Sweethearts and Heroes come to our, our district. They spent a week with us. Tom Murphy, Rick Yarish, and Pat Fish are coming back next Friday, really trying to, you know, combat that apathy we talked about and the, the school disengagement we, we spoke of earlier in this meeting. I'm really excited because our, it, it'll be the first time that our pre-K through twelve staff have been together since September first. So Megan, I would compliment her as well for putting together quite a comprehensive day for the eighteenth superintendent's workshop. It's gonna focus on literacy, numeracy, social emotional learning. We also have some pretty great activities. Tina, if you don't, if you can't bring it up, don't worry about it. We have some great activities that are gonna talk about relevant instruction for the classroom, but we're also in the afternoon gonna have some sessions that are relevant for, for life. Trooper Jason Klowicki from Troop E is gonna come over and work with our staff on a cyber bullying and cyber safety presentation. You, you may have seen recently the, the increase in people, you know, being targeted and exploited through online media, whether it's through a social media profile, whether it's through phishing. There's so much that's scary for educators nowadays, which really is something he's gonna focus on. And then our school resource officer, Rob Manzel, and assistant principal from the elementary, Matt D. John Batista, are actually teaching students and, or excuse me, teaching staff how to stop the bleed with applying tourniquets. Tina, are we having an issue with the screen?
I see it. You can't see it?
I, I can't. So that's okay. As long as everybody else, as long as everybody else can see it, that's fine. So.
No.
Nobody else, Tina? Okay, hold on just a moment. I, I could see it, so I'm sorry.
So they're doing, they're doing a presentation on applying tourniquets and, and in my newsletter to the board, I'll, I'll make sure that I give you some excerpts of what these two presentations are looking at across both the state and locally. Last weekend on Channel Eight, I believe, there was a, a presentation where a local gentleman out of Massillon actually saved the life of a senior by applying a tourniquet. He has some EMT experience. Thankfully, he and another passerby were able to quickly think and apply a tourniquet to a young man who was involved in a motorcycle accident. And last week, they showed a piece with the young man returning back to school and how thrilled he was. That two people stopped and got involved. So Matt and Rob are really excited to do a presentation on that. They went to a training in the fall and I'm looking forward to, to that being something that they, they bring to our staff. And again, we're not asking people to do it as a mandatory thing, but we're saying to people who, you know, are inclined to, to work in that environment and would like that type of training to attend. This next one is very relevant, the next slide, because the, the Wayne County sales tax is being talked about again. And so what, what I'm really encouraging our school board and our school community to think about is contacting the four people that are listed on the screen. The county supervisors are looking to eliminate the property tax break that Wayne County residents receive from the shared sales tax. This is something that I know all eleven Wayne County school districts talking about. I know our Boce superintendent is talking about it. And for our district, the consequences of losing four hundred and forty thousand dollars in sales tax revenue is really something that would be quite detrimental to our, our academic community and our community at large. That four hundred and forty thousand dollars is the equivalent of about six teaching positions. You know, and so it seems counterintuitive to us at the superintendent's level that our, our county supervisors would want to take that our our county supervisors would want to take four hundred and forty thousand dollars of of revenue out of our school districts. And their thought process is is something that they think that the state or federal government would come back in and supplement. But I have to be honest with you. As we talked about earlier with Gary's budget presentation, the tumultuous times we're in financially as a nation, as a county, and as a state. I I'm not so sure that that would happen, but I would tell you right now, we know with certainty that four hundred and forty thousand dollars is real money and comes with real consequences if it's withheld. And as I said, those six people that are impacted by that here, it's not just the six teaching positions here, it's six people that are doing less business in our county. It's six less people that are buying goods or stopping at our stores or stopping at our restaurants. And I think that that is really has some grave consequences. So for our district, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, six teachers. If you just used our figure and as a rough estimate and multiplied that by eleven across the county, you're talking about potential of sixty-six staff members. If you add BOSIs in there, now you're getting up there towards seventy-two staff members. And the money that would be lost because the positions are no longer traveling to our county and doing business in our county just seems like it's a counterintuitive thing to take back from school districts right now because that money is not going to be made up in supplies. It's going to be made up in positions. And when we talk about that, the burden is actually, it's in fact going to be passed on to our taxpayers because for us to make up four hundred and forty thousand dollars this late in the budget cycle, it it does come in the form of real cuts. And it comes with the burden being shifted back to the homeowners and businesses on their tax bills. So we've learned that Supervisor Leonard of Massillon, Supervisor Johnson of Sodas, Supervisor Donalty, are a small committee that are working on behalf of the county supervisors. But I would just ask that people consider reaching out to them and voicing their opinion as to whether you think it's a good idea or a bad idea. But I would say to you from my vantage point and what the consequences could mean for us as the school district, it it just has a longstanding detrimental impact that I don't know how we would recover from. And and that that really is pretty much my portion for tonight, considering we've had five presentations already. And I'm happy to talk with anybody about my position or anything that I've shared with you about the eighteenth or the county sales tax. Thank you, Tina. Jason?
Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but that four hundred and forty thousand is equivalent to about a four and a half percent tax cap increase or tax rate increase, isn't it?
Pretty close. And so for our district, we'll use our district figure. Again, we're four forty. I know some counterparts to the west are up there towards eight hundred thousand that they would lose. And the logic behind the rationale, thinking that our state or our federal government will come in and bail us out, has to be really reexamined because we we know the tax on gas is something that the state is considering suspending. At some point, we can't keep robbing Peter to pay Paul and figure out that we'll just tax the heck out of our community in some other way to make up for the deficit. So gas being five dollars a gallon is a very real possibility. I I think what we're going to find is our businesses being taxed more will also have to look at tightening their purse strings. And that could also come in the form of real cuts to staff as well. You know, I think about our apple farmers, I think about Marshall Farms. I think about the number of products that are are made in our community and go elsewhere. If they start to pay more in property tax and they start to pay more for fuel, you know, again, they're going to have to look at their bottom line to make sure they're profitable. I just think that it's something that, again, all the way around has some long-term bad, bad consequences that won't, we won't recover from. And I know it's talked about every couple of years, but right now it seems like it's catching more momentum than it ever ever has in the past.
Well, the root of the problem is there's not enough participants. And Wayne County really has to actively work on retaining residents in the county and enticing other outside residents to come see what beautiful communities that we live in in this county. I mean, I'm not just saying it because I live here, but we have a lot to offer, and we need to increase that tax base.
Yep, I think you're going to see across the the area, especially in our county, that there will be a similar message delivered by every school district because, again, this is something that I believe is about five point four million dollars in totality. And again, we use teacher figure. It could be service members, it could be administrators. At the end of the day, when we're coming out of a pandemic and we're trying to foster healthy and positive relationships and move our academic progress forward, this this is just scary.
The new assessments are scary, too.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. Are there any other questions, comments, or thoughts on that, Paul?
Can can staff, not staff, the board members attend Sweethearts and Heroes?
Um, I got to see what what our participation looks like. I don't, I don't know right now, but I will get back to you in my Friday newsletter to you guys. I I don't think that there's, it should be a problem with that. I know many of you met with Tom, Rick, and Pat and the team back in the fall. Linda?
I I just want to make a comment. I know Cinda has spoken to this before. Town supervisors have weighted votes. The school districts in northeast Wayne County do not have highly weighted votes. It takes four votes, four town supervisor votes in northeastern Wayne County to equal one vote from the town of Arcadia. So depending on which supervisors vote yes and which supervisors vote no.
We've already got three big ones, Massillon, Sodas, and all, they're big.
One, one point, one point that a supervisor that I have a passing relationship with made it very clear that people from northeast Wayne County and and areas that don't have as many businesses or a variety of businesses do business in that part of the county and pays pay taxes there, sales tax, but it doesn't. We need that those sales tax monies more than they do.
Yeah, and I know when Cinda and I met with our town supervisors to a person, they they said they would voice the same concerns because they know the disparity from west to east. And they also understand the importance of a dollar here and what that could, what that impact could look like on our families, especially when they're having to make difficult choices right now, given the nature of, like we said, the increased fuel costs, increased energy costs, product supply chain interruptions, product size going down. You know, there are so many different things that it just seems like this is a counterintuitive act at the wrong time.
Yeah, the worst time.
Yep.
The worst time.
I would assume, if they're talking about it, that this wouldn't be for this year. For this year, it would be for their budget year, net year, starting in January.
Correct. And so for us, what that would mean, Cinda, is probably mid-year budget cuts because, again, we're not on the same fiscal cycle. And so how do you, how do you bring new staff and entice them out to our district and say, hey, we really want great things? And then we get twenty weeks into the school year, and you might be without a job. And then how do we look our families in the eyes and tell them, you know, that third grade teacher that we had promised you is really going to be here for half the year, and then we're going to distribute, you know, four kids per classroom for the remaining staff? Or we, like we mentioned earlier, we were beneficial. Our students benefited from two modified boys' basketball teams, two modified girls' basketball teams. And if we have to shrink our teams and participation rates go down, how do you say, hey, you know, here's the thing, well, we know schools are the centerpiece of our community out on this end of the county? And and I think everyone wants the same things regardless of which which area of the county they live in. And I just think that it's, again, something that's it's it's perplexing to me because it's probably about the fourth or fifth time in my career I've heard it talked about, and I never understand it. So anyway, that's my soapbox for tonight. I appreciate you allowing me to present to you. I'm really pleased with what Megan and her team have done to prepare for next week's offering. And that's that's pretty much it. We'll get on with the good news.
Okay, thank you. Good news. Anyone? We've heard a lot of good news. Paul?
Yeah, that's what, that's how I was going to start, a lot of good news tonight. So I don't, so I don't have much left. I do have this notice of if there's anyone that wants to run for our board, I saw that that was in the in the paper. Career night at the high school, it was March sixteenth. And then Lucy Zhang, who I think was, Mike, you might remember this, and I'm not trying to put you on the swap, but I think she was our salutatorian last year. But she's, she's a RIT dean's list, so another North Rose Whupped graduate, doing great. That's it for me tonight.
Anyone else? All right. I, there were no board members who wanted to specifically request speaking to the board about something. I do know that Michael, you you and your team are pursuing the electric bus issue that was brought up a few meetings ago, so that's still in the, still being developed.
That was also talked about today, Cinda, with several of the superintendents, I think, because NISBA put something out recently. And I hope that I would be prepared to give you something either later this month or the first part of April, just to give you a quick overview. And, you know, I know it's in its infancy, but by twenty thirty-five, they're pushing to go, you know, all-electric. And, you know, we'll we'll make that part of our presentation because right now, from what we heard from one of our vendors, you know, charging a bus under thirty-two degree weather, really, it doesn't happen. So that that would be something that's a factor for us in the immediate future. But it's something that, again, maybe with time and technology improvements, you know, that makes more sense.
I heard on NPR radio today that the Chinese have the market on lithium. And there's not enough lithium being mined to meet the goals of all the governments in the world as far as that kind of vehicle. So it's a strength that we can do nothing about.
Right. I would remind you that on the eighteenth, March eighteenth, is the Rural Schools Conference. It's a Friday. It's from nine, I think, to three with some really outstanding speakers and good topics. And I do believe Tina and Linda are going, and I'm going. So if any of you others want to go, I think you need to let Tina St. John know very soon so she can register you.
I'll know by Monday.
There is a fee. It's a Friday. Oh, Monday?
Yeah, I'll let you know Monday.
Fifteenth was the cutoff, wasn't it, Tina?
I think it was.
I, it. I think it was, yeah.
It's the number that pops in my head, but all kinds of things pop into my head, so who would know?
Just quick, Linda, do you know if they're going to be posting that on the website like they have the other conferences?
Well, I don't know. See, this is, this isn't Fort County. This is rural schools.
It's NISBA Rural Schools, that's, but I would, I can let you know because I will check with Sue Wyatt. She would be aware of how it's being set up and if it is being recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Quite often.
I don't know that she would.
Well, she's in, she is in direct communication with David Little, so she could find out.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, so I'll check with her and I'll let you know.
Okay, that's good, good, okay.
I will be unavailable for that because I have kids.
Yes, Grandma's have kids. Okay, um. That completes our business for the night. We do need to go into executive session. So I do need a motion, please, to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a specific employee, Tina and Linda. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. To those of you who are listening in tonight, we will not be coming back to do any business. We will only come back into general session to adjourn. So Tina? Oh, didn't, yeah, okay, we're all set.
All right, I'm going to stop the recording.